Good evening, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Welcome to our regular Board of Education meeting. Today is Monday, February 11th. Please stand and join us in the class.
...................................................
The mission of the White Plains City School District is to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world.
Evening. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence as we recognize Ms. Marie Byrne, Guidance Counselor, White Plains High School; Ms. Rahinder Chada, Treasurer and Bookkeeper at Education House; Ms. Geraldine Henderson, Teacher, Post Road; Mr. Ernest Martucci, Psychologist at Highlands; Ms. Mamie Redd, Teacher Helper and Prepaid; and Ms. Marsha Weinstein, Teacher at Ridgeway, together with 144 years of service. Wow. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have announcements by any board members.
So, Friday night, Jim and Kane, I don't know if you came after we went to the Five School PTA fundraiser?
I was coughing again.
Okay, okay. We had a lot of fun. It was a wonderful event, well-attended at the Coliseum. It's great to see the schools together and to see lots of people out there just communicating and having a really good time.
They said they sold about 200 tickets.
Oh, they did.
Yeah.
So, a number, I'm sorry, a number of us attended the Martin Luther King Breakfast.
Oh, gosh.
I guess they were there. It was great to be with community and to celebrate the diversity and the strength and the togetherness of our community. We also attended Reading Night at Church Street School. We had a lot of fun reading to the children. We have some terrific little actors out there, or had in my group, and they made it a lot of fun.
I will add The Little Mermaid. The performance at the high school musical was fabulous, really wonderful, and I congratulate and ask the crew and the directors. It was, we have a lot of talent in our school district. I also attended a PTA council meeting. Amy Figer spoke about our volunteer program. She heads the volunteer program at the high school, and she also spoke about the White Plains High School Hall of Fame. And then there was a lot of reporting out from the different units, which is always really good to hear, all that sharing. And a few of us also went to the beginning of the special needs PTA coffee with Debbie O'Garten and Susan Luquentin. I think Roamtha were all there. It's a small gathering, and the parents really appreciate the opportunity to be able to interact with the professional staff so directly and intimately. So, thank you.
Thank you. Just wanted to add, in addition to the Martin Luther King Breakfast, which I think was awesome, the speaker was awesome, I think that we could all agree, and we all took notes because...
The poet.
Yeah, he was an absolute poet. We all enjoyed that, as well as the coffee talk. It was just great to be able to come and share that with you, Debbie. Also, I went to the Martin Luther King Luncheon, which was held at the Doubletree, and it's always a pleasure when I go because there's always a White Plains student that's being recognized for their contribution in some manner to community, service, just being innovative. And, of course, we did have a student that was honored, Ellen Doherty was there, and it was just really a great luncheon to really recognize all of the students, but especially our own family. Thank you. Yes? Okay. Sorry, I left my, I think my agenda in my... Yes. So, next, we're at public participation. Will there be any public participation? Thank you. Next, we'll have our superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Good evening, everybody. Before I start, I'd always like to welcome our student liaisons, and if you guys want to come on up and say hello to everybody, that'd be fantastic. Ms. Jackson, Pilar.
Good evening, guys. I'm Jackson, and this is...
Pilar.
Oh, my God. Sorry, I don't know which way to use.
It's okay.
So, we just have a couple of things we would like to talk about tonight, I guess. Started with something going on in our school coming up. On Valentine's Day, we have a bazaar. So, basically, all the clubs in our high school during our lunch period, I know I've talked about bazars before, but I'll say it again, we all come together, we have music, it's just gonna be a good colorful experience, a lot of pink, a lot of food, it's just gonna be good. And then, honoring Black History Month this month, being February as it is, we are having a spirit week run by our Black Awareness Club in the high school. So, starting today, actually, and for the rest of this week, students are asked to dress up in certain ways. It's advertised through social media of how, what each day is, and that should be a lot of fun, raising a lot of awesome awareness for that. And then, finally, from me, tonight is our Shake Shack fundraiser for our senior class. So, if you guys have time, if you're hungry and you like burgers or anything from Shake Shack, please go. You're raising money, should be fun, good food. That is all from me.
Okay, cool. So, yes, go to Shake Shack afterwards if you have the time and a hungry stomach. Okay, so, we had our Poetry Out Loud competition at the high school a little bit ago, and a lot of students participated. It was so exciting to see all our talented students reciting poems that they loved, and we had some kids move on to higher rounds, which is really, really exciting. The National Art Honor Society induction ceremony is finally happening this Wednesday. I'm so excited. If you stop by the high school, even if it's not Wednesday night for the ceremony, you can see all the students' artwork around the library in a section in the back. It is just so stunning and so cool to see they have so many talented students at our high school. And last from me is that this past weekend was the Westchester-Rockland Junior Humanities and Science Symposium, which is a science research competition. And we had four winners from White Plains High School, which was really exciting. We had Julian Pope, a junior. Oh, there he is on the board!
Taking away from my presentation, Pilar, but that's okay. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
We had Julian Pope, who won in the display category, and then we had three seniors win in different categories, Christina Radulovic in the PowerPoint category, and myself and Melanie Koyana win in the competitive poster board category. So, that was really cool. And that's all. Thank you.
Are you guys still selling those science research t-shirts?
I can check for you to get that.
Sure, the answer is yes.
Always yes.
Oh, I've seen that on my phone.
Thank you, guys. I also just want to take a couple of minutes before we launch into the instructional budget presentation. Tomorrow is gonna be dicey, and you know, we're gonna do our best to make the best call, which, of course, will be about safety. So, by 5:30 tomorrow morning, we'll decide what, if anything, is gonna change. Jackson, Pilar, I know you'll help me out on social media to make sure I don't take too much of a beating overnight. We'll make sure we get that message out early tomorrow. I also want to congratulate the cast and all of the support for The Little Mermaid. It was really a tremendous, tremendous performance and a tremendous undertaking, and on top of it, a lot of background support from parents and guardians as well. So, thanks to everybody for all of your support there. Post Road also celebrated its Super Bowl, S-O-U-P-E-R Bowl, and the kids really did a fantastic job of collecting canned goods for folks and eating through the pantry. If you want to see some of that, you can go to the district's Facebook page, and you can see some of the video Mr. Shepherd took of the kids participating in that. It was really fantastic. The 100th day of the school year is coming up this week, I think it's Friday? Thursday or Friday? So, we are also gonna be bringing the draft calendar to the Board of Education for consideration in March, and that'll be coming up, and everybody will be able to plan accordingly for the 2019-2020 academic year. As Pilar noted, we had some really fantastic students participating, our science research students participating over the weekend, and we're really proud of you guys. Congratulations again. Okay, before Dr. Hand jumps into our presentation, I just wanted to let the board know, we continued our student focus group meetings this month with meetings at Eastview and Highlands. Really great opportunity for me to hear from our kids unvarnished, candid on what their experience is like in school. Eastview was fantastic. I learned a lot. I think probably the biggest concern at Eastview is passing time in between class, little legs, right? Little legs to get up three floors, but they're doing a great job. Highlands, really tremendous conversation, in fact, so good that I'm gonna go back for a second conversation because I wanna take some more time and not rush through. We only had an hour to talk. So, really, really great stuff. Our kids continue to thrive and are doing great things. We're doing mid-year updates right now with our administrative staff here in the district. Exciting work happening all throughout the district, at every grade level, every school, and looking forward to continuing those conversations going forward. And also, of course, we have Valentine's Day coming up this week, and the high school is gonna be great during the lunches for the bazaar, and there's gonna be a lot of activities going on all throughout the district as well. Okay, Dr. Hand, you all ready?
Yeah.
Would you like me to control the slide transitions, or do you like to do it?
I guess you like to.
There's no pressure whatsoever.
That was a great answer. That was a great answer. That's like knowing your audience, right?
You good?
Good.
Okay, we're good. So, thank you for providing this time to allow me to review the instructional budget at tonight's meeting. It's important to note that this presentation is part of a much larger discussion related to the creation and presentation of the 2019-2020 preliminary budget, which will include much more detailed information related to projected costs. The superintendent's preliminary budget will be presented at the March 11, 2019, board meeting. The instructional budget is fully aligned with our long-range plan. It's important that I take a moment before I start to recognize the collaborative teamwork that went into crafting the instructional budget. I want to thank the principals, the curriculum coordinators and directors, teachers, and the cabinet. This has been a team effort and the diligence that went into shaping our long-range plan, and the vision for the future is greatly appreciated. We're gonna start with ELI. In ELI at the elementary level, we will be continuing the implementation plan for the Teachers College Units of Study in Reading and Writing for grades four and five. We will ensure that each classroom has literacy resources needed to implement the units with success. This budget is neutral. At Highlands, we are requesting a 1.0 full-time equivalent English teacher for grade eight to support a five-team structure. Right now, there are five teams in seventh grade, and this will allow all students to remain on a team as they move up to eighth grade. In grades six through 12, our focus for the 2019-2020 school year will be on targeting grade levels for artists and residencies such as the Shakespeare Program that we currently have. Through curriculum planning, we will be creating a thoughtful balance of classical and contemporary literature, providing a wide range of text selections for independent reading by continuing to upgrade our classroom libraries, and integrating technology tools and resources to support teaching and learning. That will also be budget neutral. In dual language, our plan is to continue the expansion of the dual-language program at Church Street School. In the 2019-2020 school year, the program will be moving up to second grade as per the long-range plan. We've already added kindergarten, and this year, we had first grade. Last year, we had kindergarten, this year, we added first grade. We want to be sure that all dual-language classrooms at each grade level have the appropriate resources in both Spanish and English to support the implementation of a 50-50 model. So, we want to make sure that we invest in any additional classroom instructional resources that we may need. In addition, we will be creating a multi-year professional development plan based on the feedback received from the Center of Applied Linguistics Program Evaluation, as well as a needs assessment that we will conduct to gain feedback directly from our teachers. This will be budget neutral. At Highlands, we will be asking for an additional .2 full-time equivalent math teacher to enhance the course offerings at grade seven to include a bilingual math option. Right now, we have a bilingual option in grade six and grade eight, but not grade seven, and we will need to create that alignment across the grade levels so that we have that continuity of a math option for bilingual math in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. At the high school, we are requesting to add a .2 full-time equivalent American Sign Language teacher to offer the next course in the language sequence that we started last year at the high school with American Sign Language I. This is also in the long-range plan. Another request would be to add a stipend position to assist with coordinating the process that students go through to earn the seal of biliteracy on their diplomas upon graduation from high school. This year, there are approximately 50 students applying for the seal of biliteracy. That is up from approximately 30 students last year, and I think the prior year, it was under 20. So, we're definitely growing in this area, and we see a need to have somebody with a stipend that's designated to coordinate that for us. And especially as our dual-language cohorts then move up to grade 12, we anticipate even higher growth in that area. So, the American Sign Language course proposal, the American Sign Language II course will be a new course at the high school. It's designed to expand students' language foundation in American Sign Language, and as I mentioned, it requires the addition of a .2 full-time equivalent American Sign Language teacher. American Sign Language can be taken to meet the second language graduation requirement for high school graduation, or it can be taken as an elective for students who may have already met the graduation requirement in another language. In social studies, we are currently conducting a review of our social studies curriculum. With the support of Putnam Northern Westchester BOCs, we have a cross-grade-level committee of teachers, administrators, and parents, who will be looking at the current status of curriculum for its strengths, areas in need of attention, the degree to which we are preparing our students to be civically engaged. Our committee will also be defining what civically engaged means, and when does that happen? Does that happen only at graduation? Does that happen all along the continuum of K through 12 as appropriate for, you know, the developmental appropriateness of a student? And to make recommendations for the advancement of any noted areas in need, as well as recommendations to sustain and enhance our successes. At Highlands, we are requesting a 1.0 full-time equivalent social studies teacher for grade eight to support that five-team structure. This social studies teacher complements the English teacher that I mentioned earlier. Both are needed to fully develop that five-team structure at grade eight so that all students will be matched to a team for all subject areas. In addition, we are requesting a 1.0 full-time equivalent social studies teacher at the high school to add additional sections to existing courses and electives. Our class sizes are very large at the high school in social studies, and we need this position to really make our class sizes, you know, better for student learning. Another one of our goals at the high school is, in social studies, is to increase opportunities for dual-language courses for college credit. And that brings us to our next slide, which is criminal justice would be a new course proposal. Actually, this is really an adjustment that is being made to a current course entitled Criminal Law. The criminal justice course would replace Criminal Law. It would be a semester course, and we would partner with Maris College. The course satisfies the semester government or participation in government course requirement that is mandated by New York State Education for graduation. It will be offered to students in grade 11 and eight as a half-year elective, and it is budget neutral.
11 and 12.
I said 11 and 8. I said the wrong thing. It's 12.
It's okay.
That would make a lot more sense.
We were listening. You were just catching.
Thank you. In mathematics, at the elementary level, we are continuing to build content knowledge through targeted PD. This year, we focused intensely on grade K through two as we supported teachers through the Envision Math 2.0 upgrade. In the 2019-2020 school year, we will continue to support the K to two teachers, but will shift a portion of the funding to intensely support the grade three through five teachers as they upgrade to Envision Math 2.0. In addition, we are requesting to add 2.5 full-time equivalent teaching positions to the elementary level so that we can have a full-time math specialist in each elementary school. Right now, we have a .5 in each elementary school and a .5 at Eastview. A full-time position at each elementary school would allow the math specialist to work with more teachers and students. The math specialist positions have been extremely well-received by our administrators, teachers, students, and parents. Their expertise has been welcomed, and they have proven to be a strong asset to our instructional program in grades K through six. Finally, we will be upgrading to Envision Math 2.0 in grades three through five in 2019-2020 school year, and continuing to support the implementation of Big Ideas Math as a resource in grades six through 11, including the integration of available online resources that come with that program. In science and engineering, next year will mark our second year of Earth Science for All for our eighth-grade students. We are requesting a 1.2 full-time equivalent Earth Science teacher to meet the needs of an increased number of students taking the labs. In addition, we will continue to fund curriculum development, which would be budget neutral, and as I mentioned before, we would be requesting the additional social studies and additional English teachers at Highlands to solidify that five-team structure for all students. Replacement of obsolete computers in the high school Project Lead the Way Labs is also one of the targets for next year. Some were updated last year, and we will continue the phase-out of obsolete computers as we move forward, and that, again, would be based on budget and within our budget. Our next area is computer science. New York State is in the beginning stages of building a computer science framework. The current focus is on developing a computer science curriculum, which will critically engage students in solving computer science issues that will result in the development of practical, personal, and societal solutions, and to build capacity for a computer science teaching force. At White Plains High School, we are in the process of building a Project Lead the Way Computer Science Pathway. Over the last two years, we have introduced Project Lead the Way Computer Science Essentials and Computer Science Principles as two new Project Lead the Way courses in this pathway. With the addition of this pathway in computer science, we have also noted a need to implement a half-year semester computer science course for students who cannot fit a full course into their already robust schedules, but would like to give a half-year elective course a try. There are also some middle-school students who enter high school without having been able to fit a Project Lead the Way course into their middle-school schedules. So, this would also give them the opportunity to have that half-year elective or that half-year course before they commit to a full-year Project Lead the Way Computer Science Essentials course. So, the new course, so, the new course proposal for the half-year computer science course would be an elective at the high school, and it would allow students to become familiar with the content of study in the field of computer science prior to committing to that full-year course. The course would be budget neutral because we would be replacing one section of the full-year course with two half-year semester courses of the introduction to computer science. In fine arts, in fine arts, we are continuing to refine and develop robust arts programs at the elementary, middle, and high school level. We are requesting the addition of a 1.0 full-time equivalent music teacher to offer a music technology course at the high school. This position would be split between the high school as a .6 and Rochambeau as a .4. We would also be, I'm sorry about that. Go back to that one slide. Okay, you're there. We would also be purchasing equipment, furniture, and software to create a music technology lab at White Plains that is estimated to cost about $69,500, and that would be grant-funded. With that said, we are proposing a new course in music technology. It would be a semester course that would earn one half-fine arts credit toward graduation. Through the course content, students would explore the basics of a sound system and audio effects, the use of GarageBand and MIDI sequencing, audio sequencing and composing, arranging, podcasting, remixing, film scoring, and live performances on a digital platform. It's really exciting. For physical education and health, we will continue the initiatives and the goals that we currently have in place, strategically and appropriately integrating technology into the curriculum, building greater capacity in those areas of project adventure and challenge-based activities. There have been recent articles in some newspapers about the need to really, you know, not make physical education maybe the way I remember when I was in school, but not the way that it's taught here in White Plains. It's really about teaching wellness and health for your entire life, so really investing in that, challenging students by presenting higher-order thinking questions and cultivating critical thinking and problem-solving skills, and then building those connections with community and outside organizations to further student physical literacy and knowledge and expertise. And I think for the next two slides, I'm going to invite...
Wait, you know what?
We have it. Here you go. Can you get it?
Got it.
You got it? Okay.
Thanks, Deb.
Go ahead.
Deb Alberg. So, before I begin, I'd like to thank the board for their continued support as we strengthen our special education and pupil services. Over the last few years, the Special Education and Pupil Services Department has had two major objectives: to strengthen our ability to support students with learning differences within the general education classroom, and provide proactive, preventative, social, and emotional supports. In order to provide access to the general education curriculum, the district has focused on building integrated co-teaching supports grades K through 12. Currently, at Mamaroneck Avenue and Ridgeway Elementary Schools, we provide integrated co-teaching grades K through three. For the 1920 school year, co-teaching will expand to include grade four. To accomplish this, we are requesting a special education teacher at the Ridgeway Elementary School and reallocating teachers to fill the MAS positions. In addition to the elementary co-teaching, next year, using current staffing, we will be expanding integrated co-teaching to include Eastview Middle School. In the 1920 school year, students will have access to integrated co-teaching grades six through 12. To support this rollout, the district has provided significant supports and professional development. Using an outside consulting firm, in addition to our elementary special education instructional coach, teachers are supported in the use of universal design for learning, zones of regulation, and positive behavioral strategies, so that students have increased access to the general education curriculum. In addition to academic supports, we know that students need to feel safe and connected to adults and peers in order to be successful in school. As part of the district's focus on social and emotional learning and positive school climate, we will be expanding our guidance curriculum to include grades K through five. The elementary school counselor will implement curriculum in the areas of college and career readiness and social skills. This position is budget neutral with an allocation of staffing from other buildings. At the secondary level, our efforts are focusing on integrating therapeutic supports within the general education classrooms. This year at Eastview, we opened our first integrated support program. Students access general education classes that align with their interests and abilities and receive wraparound emotional support services. This is in lieu of students being in a separate setting. Providing services in this way allows greater access to classes and peers, and allows students to develop coping skills within a naturalized setting. Next year, we will be opening integrated support programs at both Highlands and White Plains High School. This is budget neutral with staffing coming from other buildings. The district has implemented additional ways in which we proactively support students. We have collaborated with Andrus to open satellite mental health agencies at Highlands and Post Road, and are looking forward to expanding this to Church Street and Mamaroneck Avenue School. In addition, we have increased our mindfulness curriculum, trauma-informed care work, and dialectical behavioral therapy groups for students. All these efforts support the emotional wellness of students, improve school climate, and increase students' availability to learn. We look forward to this continued work in the 1920 school year. We look forward to this continued work in the nineteen-twenty school year.
And now Deb hands. Deb one and Deb two.
Just a few more slides. Thank you. So for the district-wide college readiness Avid program, we have a, we have a second cohort of Avid that has been moving up from the middle school into the high school. Next year, it will be at grade eleven, so we will need a, we are requesting a, a point two full-time equivalent teaching position to, you know, to accommodate that, that second cohort moving up. That includes the students from the Avid Excel program who were added, and they were ninth graders in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, so now they're tenth graders in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and next year, they will be in the eleventh grade. Continue sending teams of teachers and administrators from each participating building to the Avid Summer Institute. We have a strong presence of White Plains at the Avid Summer Institute. It's really a nice way to, you know, to collaborate and plan together and, and to really do some cross-grade level work as, as well as some intensive work within the grade level. And then continue supporting Highlands Middle School and pursue, pursuing national demonstration status, and supporting the expansion of Avid Elementary to other buildings in the future. For student activities, there, for grades seven through twelve, there is a request to increase at the middle school level co-curricular advisors at Highlands for the Morning Fitness Club, which is a new club, and GarageBand, which is an existing club. And then supporting the growth of clubs at the high school level that have exceeded the requirements of their current club level and have made a request for club-level status, supporting these existing clubs that are not official clubs but would like to request club-level one status, and ultimately providing high school students with more meaningful opportunities and growth within all of these clubs. And just to mention some of these clubs, they're the Freedom Fighters, Library Group, Maker Group, Animation Group, Book Club, Video Game Club, the Science Research Club, Stock Market Group. So there are a lot of, there are a lot of exciting opportunities for students to expand outside of their classes by, by taking advantage of these clubs and groups. And then finally, as I started the presentation, to say that this is only one part of a, a very comprehensive look at the budget, this is the rest of the schedule where we are, and I think I'm going to pass it off to Dr. Ricker from here. Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions?
No, I have like five.
Okay.
Okay, sorry. So what is Avid?
You okay with that?
Avid. Avid is advancement via individual, individual determination. It's a program that supports students that would not, that are, that are recognized as their families have never gone to college, and they themselves, through some of the courses that they have taken, or some of the, the, you know, the, the academic performance that they have had shown, would, would lead us to believe that they needed extra support to become college students themselves. So they go into a cohort experience, and they get a lot of support in, in order to, you know, make sure that they can strengthen their academic progress, and then be eligible for advanced courses at the high school level, and get on a pathway to, to college readiness.
What was very exciting for me at last graduation and the one before was seeing how many Avid kids had their Avid cords on, but also had National Honor Society cords on. And these are children who, whose parents wouldn't have known about the system, and wouldn't have known how to apply to college and things like that. And these are kids who truly thrived because of this Avid program.
And as the kids walked by on stage, when I saw the Avid button, remember, we, we did a quick survey. What'd you think of Avid? It was great. They, it was really great feedback that we got in fourteen seconds at a time, but it was good.
And what is Project Lead the Way?
Project Lead the Way is a, it's a science and engineering program that it's, it's supported through curriculum that is actually written by the Project Lead the Way organization. We have an engineering sequence that includes architectural engineering and civil engineering, basics of engineering, and they also have a medical sequence that we don't have, and they also have the computer science sequence that I just spoke about.
And we have the programs in the elementary schools.
And we'll, oh, thank you, thank you. We also have the programs in the elementary school. We have, we have Project Lead the Way from kindergarten through fifth grade, the launch program that we do engineering design with kindergartners right up through fifth grade, with a little bit of robotics thrown in there as well. And we have the program at the middle school level as well.
So you mentioned that you'd be adding a math instructional specialist?
Yes.
And that would help support the rollout of the new.
No, no, the math instructional, the, it's not a math instructional specialist, but it's a math specialist. It's, that's the title that the, the teaching position holds. Kathy Barpolos actually is the coordinator of math K through six, and I, we looked closely at the National Council of Teacher of Mathematics, their, 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 their documents to help schools decide which way to go when they're bringing math specialists into especially an elementary environment. Many elementary teachers don't have specialist degrees or specialist backgrounds in mathematics as common branch teachers, and to bring a teacher in who has that math content background into the elementary level is very powerful, not only for the students that they service, for the push-ins that they provide to the classrooms, but also the modeling that they give to the teachers and the support that they give to the overall math program.
This is very similar to years back when we focused on ELA and the importance of bringing in specialists there, and we really didn't focus on math, and then a few years down the pipe, we realized the importance of bringing the same expertise into the math realm, and that's what was part of the genesis for this.
So this would be an ongoing position?
An ongoing position, yes. But I just wanted to clear, if I made it sound that it was really for the rollout of the Envision two point oh upgrade, I, I made that connection, but that's not the, that's not the purpose that they would be. I probably said both of those things within that same slide or within that same example. But their position in the school is really to support the students and student learning, students at all levels of mathematic ability as well. So a student that might need some extra support to meet grade-level standards, as well as students who are advanced and need that extra support to enhance their learning in mathematics.
That's last one.
Okay, that's good. You're doing well so far, I think.
But it's doing that my, the support for the club money is awesome. I just was wondering what it goes towards. Like you said, there's all these new clubs when they get to like level one, do they get funding for their event?
It goes towards a stipend for the teacher, and then once the, once they come up to club status, then there are formalized requirements that they have, and that they are able to raise money and do other things, and they have to have a certain amount of meetings, they have to have a certain amount of community service hours. So it gets much more formalized once it gets to that level. Yeah, it supports that.
I guess I just had a question and a comment, understanding this is the first presentation in a multi-step process, so it would, it would help me anyway, and I don't know if it helps the other members. You know, we are adding new initiatives over the years and new programs. It's helpful to kind of see how that looks over a number of years, kind of where we've, where we've been, and what programs have been sunset, what programs we've, we've added as we look at our enrollment. We look at, I mean, we know that we're leveled to slightly increasing, to slightly decreasing, to, I mean, it varies from year to year. And even though we can have same enrollment one year, next, you know, in two years in a row, it could vastly vary our need for staffing, depending on where those students end up, where their seats are. So I think it would be helpful just to kind of get an understanding on how that all fits into the, to the puzzle pieces. Again, we're talking just, you know, again, with those, those new, those new initiatives as we look through it, and, you know, as, as, as we keep going, measurement data is always helpful, program review, where we are, what, what, what our expected results were, what we're seeing, are we seeing, are we, do we think we're getting what we're paying for, you know, is the juice worth the squeeze? Do we think we need to squeeze it a little bit further, or do we think it's time to chuck this lemon out and go with something else? But, you know, as, as we look through those things. And I know you've done a lot of those things, and that's part of this process. It's just helpful to kind of give us a little flavor of that as you move forward. And again, I know this is, this is the first of six more meetings at least that we'll have on, on top of that. And also, you know, we, we've done our strategic plan. We've done that really two times over the la, two complete times over the last dozen years. And with those strategic plans, we know there come new initiatives, and there's usually costs attached to those initiatives, and it's helpful to share that with us as well because it's, it's the reality of what we do. We want to make ourselves better, but these things come with a price tag, and this is when we see it, and this is the time of year for us to be able to look at those things and, and really give us, give us that moment to assess it and see where we want to go with that, and listen to your recommendations.
Debbie, do you, I just thought of this. Do you have a total of what the increase is in the instructional budget from last year?
And?
The FTEs are nine point three.
Nine point three.
The FTEs.
For this.
You meant, you meant total.
I meant dollars, estimated dollars, but we don't use that yet.
Instructional FTE.
Okay. Just the instruction, but it's nine point three. Okay.
And again, I think that's where it's helpful, because I know there's, there's ins and outs, and certain things are sunset, and enrollment increases, and enrollments decrease.
Absolutely.
So as, as it plays out.
Sure, and, and as we go forward and, and begin to, to put these puzzle pieces together, we, you know, the, the board will see the, the picture come as a whole and have, have a, will have a better, actually, will have a better grasp also on, on the, the dollar amounts as well as what the limitations are and where we need to make adjustments.
Right. I mean, we, I mean, we know it's a plan, and we want to follow that budget because that's our, that's our policy, and that's our plan for the year, but we also know things are changing.
Rapidly.
Governor, on Fri, Thursday or Friday, may decide to restate his budget, so we know that can certainly happen.
Valentine's Day, I think.
The Valentine's massacre, hopefully.
Hopefully not.
Hopefully. But, but honestly, I mean, those are all those estimates, and those are, it's a forecast, and it's working with the best information you have at that time.
Absolutely.
I appreciate you doing that, and us understanding that this comes in in pieces. So it's kind of putting together a larger picture piece by piece, and when we sit down and go through it all after it's all been there, those are the types of things that would help, that would help me as we go through this. So thank you.
And some of these things are based on student enrollment, but some of these things are enhancements to a program. So like, when we were moving up the Project Lead the Way Launch Program in elementary school, we were moving that up as an enhanced program so that we could support all students with enrichment through engineering design, and that science connection as the new standards begin to roll out. So we, we can definitely find ways to measure the effectiveness of the Project Lead the Way. I mean, in terms of parent response, student response, and teacher response, it's been a highly regarded program that has, has children excited about learning, about science and engineering, and designing their own things, and collaborating with each other, all those twenty-first century skills. So we can take a look at that, but that's not necessarily tied to student enrollment per se, whereas something, as we continue to move up the American Sign Language course, we could definitely look for efficiencies there. The students that are going into American Sign Language, they're obviously not going into another language if that is their, if that's the language that they've chosen for their graduation requirement. However, there could be students that are taking that not for their graduation requirement for language, they're actually taking it as a, as a, as an additional elective. So those are things that we'd have to take a look at, you know, just giving one example.
And the other example you provided, which I thought was very helpful, was the criminal justice class.
Yeah.
And again, it's, it's a neutral item, but it, but it provides greater, greater value to, to our students.
Greater opportunity, and the nice connection with Maris College is that Maris College allows you to have that partner connection, no matter how many students in any given class want to take it for college credit. So if you have a full class, and there are only a handful of students that want to take it and earn the college credit, Maris College will still support us in that. So that, that's, that's pretty nice.
And they've given us a big discount, right?
Yeah.
That helps too.
I agree.
Good?
Thank you, Dr. Hand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Al Garden.
Yeah.
And, and thank you all as well.
D squared.
D squared.
D squared.
Real quick, before, before I, I go to just the, the final slide or so, just on your agenda, we identified the fiscal stress report from the comptroller. You've seen this. The good news is there is no designation. The, the challenge, of course, the, the challenge is that we know that there is a cliff, a fiscal agenda, and I think Trustee Ricky was just really alluding to that. We, we have to be cognizant of that. We are thinking about it. I can tell you that Dr. Vakaro Teich and her team are constantly looking down at the horizon and with a recognition that, that it does exist. So we need some policy shifts for sure, you know, in Albany to ensure that the, the dollars that should be coming to White Plains are coming back to White Plains, are in fact flowing back to White Plains for our children, but at the same time, we have to make sure we're fulfilling our, our fiduciary responsibility and, and planning conservatively for our fiscal forecast as well. So the good news is it's there, there's no designation, but we'll keep a close eye on that as well. Coming soon, you know, I was supposed to speak at Church Street tomorrow night. Hopefully, I still will be, I don't know. I have to just give the Church Street PTA a little shout-out. They, they plucked a picture of me off the internet. It was from like ten years ago. I looked great. I thanked, I thanked them for that. National, National Art Honor Society, again, as Pilar noted, is going to be on Wednesday. Please take some time when you're leaving Ed House to enjoy what's, what's been put up. The students, the work is amazing. I am so excited as well. I got a special piece of art sent to me from the AP Ceramics Club. So one of our students sent me a piece of art that she created, and there was a little note inside specifically for me, so I put it on my desk. I was so happy to, to receive that. Midwinter recess is coming up next week, and of course, we have a special Board of Education meeting to, to take a look at the non-instructional piece of the puzzle on the twenty-fifth. And then trustees, who are, who are lucky enough to, to take part in this on the twenty-sixth, of course, we have a policy committee meeting, which everybody looks forward to.
Yes, absolutely.
That sounds great. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, so next, we're going to move on to summary action items. So, may I have a motion for summary action items from item four through item seven?
So moved.
Eight.
Eight.
No, but eight, we have tertiary stuff, that's why I didn't include them.
They're now putting them, they're now in summary.
All right, so let's, okay, a motion for items, items four from section four through section eight. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any questions? All in favor?
Oh.
No, that's okay. You just cut down the meeting by adding tertiary. But I, I would like to just recognize and thank for their great, grateful contributions of five thousand four hundred from the Friends of White Plains Public Schools for the grants at MAS, Post Road, and Ridgeway. Be sure to, to take a look at their, their webpage. They're doing a couple of big fundraisers coming up soon. The NICS coming up in the next couple of weeks, and then, of course, after the, the St. Patrick's Day Parade at Buffalo Wild Wings, right, I believe? So that'll be fun. Also, a hundred dollars from Carol and Alfred Lally, Jr., for the school lunch program, a thousand dollars from Donna Joseph for the Dr. Leonard Rhodes Memorial Fund, one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars from Ernestine Glenn for the E. Glenn Creative Writing Scholarship, eight hundred and forty-three dollars from various donors for the Philip Barnett Memorial Scholarship, and two thousand eight hundred and fifty from various donors for the Liz Fink Hildago Scholarship Fund, and a trombone from the Whitland family for the district's music program as well. So thank you very much to all of our generous donors.
Thank you.
We have thirteen retirees as well, just teachers alone.
Thirteen retirees. We, we'll recognize all of them come.
As well as our teaching assistants and other, and other folks.
A lot of years, a lot of really good years presented.
A lot of great years.
Thank you. So next, on the individual action items, we have, the recommended action is to approve and ratify the terms of the memorandum of agreement, and authorize the superintendent of schools to execute a collective bargaining agreement with our White Plains Teachers Association. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
You have any questions?
I, I would. Thank you, Madam President. I would like to recognize President Carol Lyons is, is here with us this evening. Hi, Cara. Cara and David Acevedo were part of a, a larger negotiations team for the White Plains Teachers Association. I would like to thank them again. It was a collaborative and collegial undertaking. Negotiations are never easy, but I can tell you that I believe that at the end of the day, we recognized that we were all responsible for the well-being of every member of the White Plains educational community, and I want to thank you for your partnership there.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And I abstain.
Thank you, Jim. Next, we have the recommended approval of an amendment to the policy for non-represented employees to include Director of Human Resources.
employees to include Director of Human Resources with a salary range of 144,000 to 174,000. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do you have any questions?
Great. Thank you. I would like to thank Mr. Pepper as well as the Cabinet and all the members of the search team as we conclude the search for the Director of Human Resources. And I would also like to recognize Dr. Jacqueline Manning Campbell, who is here with us this evening. Very nice to see you, Dr. Manning Campbell, and, and thank you very much again for your participation in the process. It was a very talented pool, and I can tell you that the process for selection was rigorous and multivariate. So we're very proud to see you here this evening, and again, very shortly, welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
You preempted me.
I'm sorry.
Congratulations, Jack.
Well, not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Next, we have the recommended approval of the appointment for Jacqueline Manning Campbell, new position of Human Resources Director from a period, for the probationary period of March 14, 2019, to March 13, 2023. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do you have anything to say? Questions? You want to say anything? Well, not yet. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll say congratulations, Dr. Manning Campbell. Congratulations. Would you like to say a few words? Say hello?
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much. I'm so, so, so excited to be here. I'm looking forward to this journey. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Next, we're going to move on to board discussion for our committee reports. Do you want to report out?
Right. I just couldn't remember. That's right.
Yeah. Go ahead.
We had a visit to Church Street. We had an amazing visit at Church Street. Again, what's going on in our schools, Deb Bargrattan, her staff, Susan, we were at Church Street looking again at.
The Buddy.
Oh, the Buddy. This was amazing. These are, these are kids who were brought in, in the general population, who were brought in, they're given training by, by the psychologists and how to, how to communicate and how to deal with some of the kids that are included in the, in the school. And they go in and they, they partner and they friendships, they use adaptive technology to communicate with them if, if need be. And it was a really powerful experience listening to the kids, these mentors, these buddies, talking about the, the impact and how this one boy simply said, "Everybody's different, but we're all the same, we're all kids." And so they're learning things that we need to learn from them. So it's a, it was really a heartwarming, great program.
So I'll just add briefly to that. Dr. Ricker and I had opportunity to meet with the Minister's Fellowship Council, and I did share with them that as a board, we are very unique in terms of, and I already shared it with you because I couldn't wait, you know, that we're very unique and that we do get to go into the classrooms as a board. I don't think that that's something that's widely done, and I think it was very impressive, so I just wanted to add that publicly so that, A, you know, times two, and that, you know, is just recognized publicly.
Appreciate having you.
No, I appreciate it.
So curriculum and instruction met, and we went through the instructional budget that you heard tonight, and finance also met, and we had a presentation by Frank Stefanelle on facilities and operations and the plan going forward, and Ron Vales presented the technology plan. So I guess we'll hear more about that on February 25th.
You get to hear these presentations three or four times.
Always good. Gets better.
This isn't particularly about a committee meeting that happened, but I think it's important for all of us to remember that Thursday will be one year since the Parkland happened, and many of us were at march for our lives with the children that were there, the teenagers, and I think we should take a moment to remember that and our commitment to try to prevent gun violence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Anything, anything else to report on? Okay, so I think we're all good. Before we adjourn our meeting, I'd like to thank our Johns, John Shepherd and John Misavich for all you do, we really appreciate it. And without further ado, may I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Safe travels.
Thank you. Have a good vacation. Thank you.